It's six o'clock. I'm calling the order of the district, Monticello District, eighty-two school meeting. Please write in.
Hi. I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just making a note that Chair Jennifer Lewis-Candigator is absent tonight. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, second by Kathy Seefar.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Sorry, guys, this is my first time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign? Moving on, our motion passes. Moving on to citizens comments, we do have one citizen comment tonight. I just need to read something before the citizen comment and then we can go ahead with that. We have one request for a citizen's comment tonight. In a moment, I'll ask you to come to the lectern to introduce yourself and address the board. But first, I would like to issue a couple of reminders just regarding our citizens' comments guidelines. Monticello School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decisions, decision-making, and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. It's important to understand that our policy, that per policy, the board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. If applicable, future follow-up may be provided via the contact information provided on the request form. You may now address the board. Per policy, you have three minutes. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Hi, my name is Dustin Lysinski. I guess just foremost, or beginning here, just wanted to thank the district for coming up with the, I guess, the format. It was not publicly presented, I guess, on the website on how citizens' comments could do that. So I appreciate the fact that they got that formatted now and have a format for that citizens can be able to make comments. So thank you for that. What I'm here tonight is just to talk about the upcoming operation, our operating referendum that is going to be discussed tonight and then maybe in future meetings. Just wanted to note here that we have a budget, a 2021 state budget that was just passed that was the largest in fifteen years, that gave approximately about $296 per pupil increase per year. And if you kind of look at it from a, kind of a just a general thought of how you, you know, would look at that budget as a whole, you could take a classroom of typically thirty students and then you'd say it's about eighty-eight hundred, eighty-eight hundred dollars per year increase. And then if stadium upgrades and some of the other wants that were put into some of the funding previous that may have influenced why, you know, grasping traditional funds when we're kind of doing the wants and the needs a few years back. I also wanted to go into that, if the state does take with that budget and everything else, the state is taking up our wallets in the sense that, you know, they have the biggest pocket and they're the ones that are feeding downward, but, you know, for us, you know, either way, it's taking out of us taxpayers' money and our income to subsidize to pay for that. So with increased cost of gas, groceries, everything's coming up, all everybody's budgets are getting more and more value of, you know, what do I have to spend, what I don't have to spend. Inflation's going to take a hold here as well, of course, in the long term. And also with the uncertainties, you've got recently with what they're going to do with the mandates and everything else, you've got to take those households of their income and you've got to think, you know, how is this going to impact in the raw moment? You know, it may not seem like a lot of dollars to you, but when we're been under the last year, going through what we did, and now moving into one that's uncertain going forward, you've got to think of people and how they're able to get through these, you know, cycles of stuff that's happening that we've never been in before. So I would very well appreciate if people were able to consider that when you guys are talking about this referendum and trying to put it up for proposal. Other ways of at least dealing with it, I guess, you know, this is an outstanding deficit you guys are dealing with, but there are creative and efficient means of looking at it and trying to come up with ideas outside of what you normally do to pay for that. You can ask a lot for donations, I know there's some realities there, but there's also ways of doing it in a way that can subsidize areas that you may not have thought about, and as well as volunteer. Because I think community involvement, you know, especially in this town, isn't hard to find, it really isn't. So there's a lot of ways to subsidize some of the needs that you guys are looking for to fill in those voids, to be able to maintain some of the programs we do have in the district. So today, I'm just, I'm asking you to very much think fiscally here, be responsible for knowing that it's just not only, you know, a district-wide dollars, it's a person's dollars, their budget, and what they're going to have to go through, you know, probably in the next couple of years to get out of this fiscal year that a lot of people have had to go through. So.
Aye. Opposing sign? Innovation leader, leadership. So tonight, we have a presentation from the fishing team, outstanding Brendan LeBeau with the Monticello Community Center. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Hey there, I'm Brendan from Monticello Community. We are the Monticello Fishing Team. We started last year, this is our second year, we just completed. We had eighty-seven kids this year compete for the fishing team, which is a lot. Clicker.
Just a second, the computer's frozen.
All right.
Board members, you do all have access to the slideshow via the agenda. Unfortunately, we might have to look through that. Access to the screen is not working right now. Any chance that you guys can go through the?
Oh, yeah.
I can bring, would it help to have a laptop over there?
We got it.
Should be working.
We don't actually have it on the agenda.
It's, we have the actuary study.
Yep.
It should, oh, if you, okay, it's in, it's in the shared folder, but I can't.
You're safe.
It's just pictures on there, but.
Under pressure, Gavin.
We should be good, we are online now.
All right, there's our team, there we are. Okay, so like I said, we had eighty-seven people on our team this year. We actually, this was a picture from our very last night of the year, which was last Thursday, I believe, and we had sixty-five kids there that night, along with thirty-three boat captains and all the boats along with it. So, so we actually start at the very beginning of the year in March, and we do three, we meet three times in classroom before we even hit the lakes. We had a guy from the DNR come out and teach us all about the base species and everything in the river systems, and then we had a professional bass angler come out and give us all sorts of techniques. And then we did also do, like, we gave, we gave our, every kid gets a fishing pole, we line them up, spool their line up, and then we had a couple of our local boat captains actually give seminars about heated local vegetation, Bob, and just a seminar about just fishing techniques and how to be better at fishing. So we really try and get the kids to learn more about fishing before we hit the lakes. And then when the weather turns nice, then we head outside, which you can see here, so we actually do, we meet every single Thursday at local lakes around Monticello, Annandale, Buffalo, any lake that has a big enough access for us, basically. We usually have around sixty kids compete every single week with just our team, so that means we have to break up into three lakes and have about ten boats per lake, so we have, so we have about twenty kids at each access each night. And then we sign up for either, we have, we're kind of unique in the fishing team sector because we offer both multi-species, so your pipe, bass, walleye, crab, b norther, and we offer just bass fishing, just the competitive bass fishing, which that's a lot of what the state does also. So each week, we, everyone signs up if you can make it, and we assign each to a different lake, and away we go. And we actually have a nice little app where you take a picture of your fish holding it, just like they're doing, and then you take a picture of it on the, on the, on the measuring, on board also, and we have our local competitions every single night. So it works out really, really well, and actually, and so it's kind of hard to grasp. So we have our individual team, and then we have, we have the SATT tournaments, which Autumn is going to come up and explain and introduce herself.
Okay, I'm Autumn Ziegelmeyer, I'm going into tenth grade, this is my first year in the fishing league. So the SATT tournaments, all the schools statewide in Minnesota get together at certain lakes, and I think there's like, probably tournament seven?
Yes.
Six in the whole season, and you fish from seven AM to two PM, and you turn your fishing just like how you do in those apps.
And it's just bass only?
Oh, yeah, and then bass only, it's a large mouth, small mouth.
And the virtual?
Yeah, and then there were a couple of virtual tournaments, too.
And the virtual tournaments are unique in a way where, whereas at these SATT tournaments, we have, what, the same number of boats on there? Hundred and fifty to two hundred boats on each, on one lake, so we do Minnetonka, Leech, all the big lakes around, and then, so that everyone's competing on the same lake, but then Autumn is talking about the virtual tournaments, and that is, everyone is online, so you can go, you can go down to any lake you want, and it's just open to the public or open to anyone that qualifies for the SATT tournaments, so. So we've actually had Sam as also competed in. Sam goes up into that?
Yeah, I competed in all the tournaments last year and this year, and this year I qualified for the state championship, or the tournament champions, that's on Pecagavon in two weeks. And so the top ten percent from all the first four tournaments go to that tournament. And then there's a state tournament, state team tournament on Leech in four weeks, and that's where every school sends three teams to that lake, and they all compete together against other schools. That's a two-day tournament.
Congratulations, yeah.
Yeah. Hit the next area.
Yeah, so for community service, we do multiple things. We have the fishing clinic, as you can see on the far side over there, and that, we had stations set up with angler each station telling, teaching kids how to fish, like, knot tying and different species of fish and multiple stations like that. We did that with the Becker team, and that was in the Fleet Farm parking lot, and Fleet Farm, like, set everything up for us. And then for River Fest, we also sold ducks, and we also were in the parade, we're giving out candy in the boats as boats.
Hi, I'm Sam Helgert, and I'll be talking about the boat captains, they're just basically anyone that has a boat in, or the county, upright county, or in Minnesota. Basically, if you want to be nice and you have a boat, you can go out and help the kids in Monticello to go fishing. Basically, like, my boat captain, Bob, he was a pretty nice guy, he taught me new techniques on how to catch fish. Basically, he said be slow and have a little more action to bait and that stuff. Yeah, this is all of our boat captains out here, and second to the left, smallest right next to the guy in the gray sweatshirt, that's my captain, Bob, holding up that bass, he's a pretty nice guy, I like him, and I've been doing this ever since we started, so, and I've learned more than last year, and I think I've really improved. And that's all I got to say.
And so, so just to clarify, it's about eighty percent of our kids actually have a parent or someone, or grandfather, or someone that takes them out fishing with us, but we have a ton of kids that don't have someone to take them out, and that's where these guys are absolutely, I mean, we couldn't do it without them. So these guys are kids, people that don't have a kid in the team, they just simply come out and help the kids fish, and it is absolutely amazing. Yeah, this is actually, this is Dave Tina's husband over here, he's been huge in helping us, too. So I just, I mean, we, you can't say enough about these guys, they're unbelievable, I mean, it's, it's a commitment, too, because we're out in lakes in Annandale and Maple Lake, and it's not by town, and they drive their boat over there, and a lot of these guys live on lakes, so they take their boats off and then come up to our lake and spend three hours driving around kids and, I mean, putting them on fish, and it's just amazing what they do. And we, you know, like I said, we couldn't do it without them. And so this is Nicole, and Nicole is actually, so last year, before we even started the team, or right before COVID hit, she's the one that called our office and said, why don't we have a fishing team?
Can I talk to the right guy?
Snowball, yeah.
So my name is Nicole Hills, I've been on the board for a couple of years now, and I'm going to talk about all of our amazing sponsors in town, and some of them aren't even in town. And we really hit it hard this year, trying to get more sponsorship so we can do more for the kids, so we could buy them a fishing, every kid a fishing rod, so we can give the captains gas cars to thank them, and then give the kids prizes every week. So we had four different levels this year, we had platinum sponsors, gold sponsors, silver, and bronze, and depending on the level of sponsorship is where they ended up on our jersey, but we also have team t-shirts as well, so we have some sponsors on the back of our, our t-shirts. It's not really hard sell for this because people are so excited to get kids out, away from electronics and just outside, and then just creating lifelong anglers. I mean, that's our goal, is to create a love and knowledge base now, so they can do it well into adulthood. So, yeah, so it's incredible, this community support. I know Brendan's got a lot of texts and phone calls and conversation with parents, I have too, about how their kids look forward to it every week. It gets them out and gives them, you know, something to look forward to, they learn a lot, and to be with people who are just as passionate about fishing as their kids are. Do you have any questions, anyone?
So every week when we're approving donations to the fishing team, you're the one raising that money?
Yep, yep, so we have a sponsorship form, we have reached out via email, phone calls, stopping in, all of the board members, and some of the boat captains, you know, the companies that they work for, they're like, my kid is in this team, I'm the boat captain, my company wants to sponsor. But otherwise, it is some cold call, a lot of cold, cold calling, and it's cool when they say yes, you know?
Have you spoken with Gary Rabnag about?
I did, he was actually my first call.
Okay.
And he said it's a great idea, he just couldn't do it last year, so I don't know as it grows, you know, if that's something that will be brought in. Another thing that I think was an issue is it's not like a Minnesota, Minnesota State High School League-approved sport, so, but the SATT and the people there are trying to get it approved.
Yeah.
So it's easier for schools to have a team.
And my thought process with that is, because I know, like, if there's companies in our community that support, you know, different activities, we have the, the opportunity to advertise for them and programs and things like that.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I don't, I mean, obviously, a conversation has to be held with Gary, but I don't see why if these individuals are contributing to our, to our school district through this, to this group right here, that we couldn't. I mean, that, that's just another tool that you have in, to help you to say, like, it's going to be put all of your name, it's going to be put names, there are going to be businesses we put on our, every game day program that we have, or on our website, things like that, so. And Brendan, I don't know if that's happening or not, but maybe that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little tougher because it's just not high school sanctioned yet, but we did talk to them and about getting kids, being able to have the opportunity to letter at least next year, so we have that, but, I mean, yeah, it's, right now, it's just kind of a community thing.
Yeah.
And actually, all the surrounding communities, I don't even think it's in the school district at all, we're one of the only ones that is in the school, so.
I have a question, what is the age range? Like you said, eighty-seven kids, that's really impressive for a two-year-old.
I forgot to mention, grade six through twelve.
Six through twelve.
Six through twelve, yeah.
And I think, did you run out of space this year? I thought I had heard someone that was on a waitlist, or?
Yeah, yeah, we, we did run out of space, if they were bringing their old boat captain, we took him out every time. It's the kids that we just, we, like, the community member, we just don't have enough community members to do that.
Right.
That was one of the reasons, and they're only, I, I'm thinking of pretty much every one, but.
Yeah, what a great program, I'm excited for it, yeah.
Is there anything that we can do to assist? I mean, do you have anything on your mind that we could?
Well, coming over the winter, we're always looking for more sponsors, obviously.
And boat captains, if you know someone with a boat, yeah.
Boat captains are huge.
What about the process with the state high school league and that? Do you know where they're at with that?
I don't. They were really making strides before COVID hit, and then everything kind of stopped. So I haven't talked to them.
It is absolutely taken out. Those SATT tournaments that these three have all been in, those, we said there are a hundred and fifty to two hundred boats, and registration starts at six PM, and they're full by seven PM. Those two hundred boats are all full. So, I mean, it is absolutely taken out. I know a couple of kids from Becker are getting scholarships already, too, and it's just like, the, it's, the sport is absolutely taken out, so I would say it's going to matter how many more are going to be high school sanctions, just like the trap team, and, yeah.
Any thought of expanding it into ice fishing?
So, yeah, you obviously have a much bigger risk in ice fishing, but.
No.
But you don't need a boat.
So we, we are going to hopefully do a, like, a one-day tournament, and that way we can do it way late in the year where there are no risks, but trying to, trying to run like an every-week league is just, the ice is all predictable, it's just, it's a lot different.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know a lot of our people are loving it.
And we've talked about doing virtual tournaments on our own, through our app, and then just, you know, have awards for kids at the end of a month or whatever, so they don't have to get out every week, it's just whenever they can get out, too.
I know some of the lakes have veterans organizations, have large ice fishing houses, and I'm wondering if there's a potential partnership possibility in there.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I would like to, for our team to volunteer at some of the local ice fishing tournaments as well, you know, whether it's drilling holes or whatever, I know doesn't think Lake and Maple Lake has one, and so maybe we could get involved that way, too, for our community service aspect of it.
Do you know about how many of the students just have really no fishing background, and that this is their, like, their first opportunity out of your group?
Like, percentage-wise, I don't know, I know a lot of the sixth graders, the really young ones, as, as they get further, I can say last year it was a lot higher percentage, but then we got a lot of those kids back this year, so.
Sure.
That first year, there was a lot of boats that had a whole lot of tangles constantly, but.
Wow.
We've come a long way since then, so.
What did they have to do before?
Every year, well, the first years, the first couple of weeks are, like I said, disastrous, but it's, it's tough.
Little learning curve.
The kids figure out how this is all going, basically.
And doesn't the middle school have, like, some exploration days where they can have different activities they can sign up for and things like that? Do I remember that from somewhere?
Possibly. I know when my kids went to Little Mountain, they had those exploration days, too, but I think COVID changes things, so I don't know if they're going to come back enough.
Any other questions?
Brendan, what's, when you talked about lettering?
Yep.
Do we have a policy that says they can't letter because it's not an official physical sport, or what?
Yeah.
What's the deal with that?
We're, I, Gary, it should maybe be a little long-term, I can't remember exactly how you said it, but we did say we could make it happen next year, we're just too far behind this year.
Yep, understood.
But next year should be possible.
Okay.
So, which I think would be a good opportunity.
I think it is, it's just, it's another activity that, you know, maybe you don't like to play baseball or basketball, this is great, just gives kids like, those kids like to do other stuff, and now we have an opportunity for them to do it in a, with a team and enjoy doing it, and who knows where I would lead, you know?
Well, and that's where I got the idea, so I was at the Annandale Parade, probably four years ago, and I, they had a float going by, and I'm like, wow, that's so great, you know, because my son isn't super athletic, sporty, but I knew he liked to fish, you know, and then I was talking to someone, they said it's super easy to set up a team, and he gave me the phone numbers of a couple of people, and I talked to Gary, and then I called Brendan, and here we are. So, and it's so much fun to see those kids come off the lake.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So excited, and excited about their personal bests and, you know, all that stuff.
I'm just, I'm really impressed that it's eighty-seven kids in two years.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
That is, that is a tremendous achievement, and that's, I mean, that's why I think we, if, if there's anything we can do to help the program along and to help with the formalization process, I'd like to see that happen, because as you said, not every kid is a football player or a sports.
So that, that is the beauty of our kind of club, too, is, you know, we meet on Thursdays, right? And early in March and in April and in the rest of spring, it is tough for kids to get there every week, so we do, you know, it's not like lacrosse where you need to be in a practice, this is like, hopefully, you get there as much as you can, towards, once we hit the water, it cools out, and most kids are there almost every week, so it is the beauty of that, where it's not like the strict, you have to be there every week either, but every time you come, you learn a lot. I mean, I mean, we had that professional bass guy sit down, and I mean, he blew us all away, and it was, it was like, oh.
I'm a big advocate of it as well, my son participated in Annandale when we moved, when we lived there, so prior to coming here, and he absolutely loved it, it was huge for him. Now we have a neighbor, we live on a lake that helped out Matt this year as a boat captain, but an idea for more boat captains, have you thought about reaching out to lake associations?
Sure.
Because they have the connection with everyone that lives on the lake, and there's quite a few, I know even on our lake, who are retired that would maybe consider being captains in the future.
That's a really good idea, that way we can just designate that lake, whatever that night, and they would take their boat out. Your neighbors with Matt, was that what you said?
He crossed the lake, yep.
Oh.
My husband fishes with them a lot.
Sure. He was the only guy that was just there, and he just counted every week, it's just amazing.
Yep. One of the dads at the, we had a pizza party that last night, and one of the dads is like, you know what, it forced me to spend time with my kid, you know, like, it was one of those things where it's like, you know, you're so busy all the time and going, and going, and going, and it's something you want to do, but this, he did it every week, you know, because they had to, so, it's good family time.
There's just so many positive things about, I mean, you're talking of communication skills, you're talking about.
Problem solving.
Problem solving, getting off your devices, a lifelong skill you can use the rest of your life that you can pass on to your younger generations, I mean, there's just so many cool things about this, it's awesome, you guys, sweet.
Thank you very much, your opinion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Jill Erdahl for the actuary study.
Yeah, so I just wanted to introduce Jill Erd- Erdahl, she is from Hildy Incorporated, and every two years, school districts have to do an actuarial study where it looks at our post-retirement benefits, whether it's health insurance severance, those types of things. And so I thought it'd be important for the board to kind of see the latest report, it was just finished probably a month or so ago. It helps you understand that contracts do have money and values in it, so it's important for you to understand that as, you know, we get into the negotiating season, so I will transfer it over to Jill.
Hi, I'm Jill, thank you for having me this evening. I want to say this is the story of my life, I always end up going after fun topics like that. And now we get to talk about post-employment benefits, but I'll try to keep it as interesting or, or as quick as possible, so, or both. So, but as, as I was listening to the fishing club thing, I wanted to let you know, too, that it kind of continues in college, so my son just graduated from Gustavus, but he took a J-term class that was called, you know, like, river and stream management or something like that, it was biology-based, but it was really a fly fishing class, but then at first I thought, what am I paying for? But he said it was the one of, one of the best classes he had, you know, throughout college, and he was a biology and chemistry major, so I'm sure there were lots of interesting classes. And then it did foster a lot of the same things we're hearing about here, so for all these kids, they'll even, I mean, get to continue, I think, doing a lot of cool things in. So I'm sure there were lots of interesting classes. Um, and then it did foster a lot of the same things we're hearing about here. So for all these kids, they'll even, I mean, get to continue, I think, doing a lot of cool things in, in college, um, you know, a, as they go to and learning more. So anyway, it was a, it made me think of that and that he would have loved to have had a high school club too, I'm sure, to be, be fishing in. So you can go to the next slide. Yep, there we go. So, um, tonight we'll just, um, I'll hit the highlights of the report. If anybody wants to see more details on your post-employment benefits, Tina's got the full reports with all the details in them. And you may have, already have copies of those. So you can go to the next slide. So here it is. First I give you a little overview. So again, um, tonight we're talking about the other post-employment benefits that you have in your contract. So not the public pensions, but mainly post-retirement medical, dental, or life benefits that you're offered to your employees when they retire. So that's the liabilities we're valuing. So no pensions, but other post-employment benefits. And again, mainly post-retirement medical benefits. So in your contracts, there's really two kinds of post-retirement medical benefits. One is mandated by the state on the insurance continuation statute. So if you're a public employee and you retire from the district or city, county, if you meet certain minimum eligibility requirements when you retire, the public entity has to offer you access indefinitely to the medical and dental plans. But the kicker is they also have to offer it to you at the group or blended premium rates. So that's not a benefit really to you until you're sitting next to your neighbor, talking about where you're each gonna get your, you know, medical benefits from when you retire. And they can't stay on their employer plan, but a public employee can and continue to pay that same rate. So the benefit there is kind of what we call an implicit rate subsidy or a hidden subsidy. So we look at what are the true claims that people are, early retirees are running. And then we compare that to what they're paying in premium themselves to stay on the plan. So that difference there, which I'll show you in a picture in a minute, is a benefit, that implicit benefit. And then within your contracts, you have certain groups that get what we call direct subsidized OPEB or other post-employment benefits when they retire. So a portion of the premium, you know, may be payable for a certain amount of time. So those two pieces then form the bulk of your liability at Monticello Schools. Most of your groups do have what we call have sunset clauses in place on those kinds of benefits. So a hire date restriction, so you had to have been hired before a certain date to be able to grow into those retirement benefits when you retire. So in our current study, we had four hundred and twenty-six active participants included as of July one, twenty twenty, and forty-nine retirees currently on your plan that we valued. So we not only have to look at those that are currently retired, but we do have to look at everybody that's actively working, project what their retirement benefits might be, but then bring it back and kind of spread it over their career. So the Government Accounting Standards Board, or G A S B, only wants to know about what your employees have accrued for their service that they've earned with you to date. So not any projected service. So that's why both we look at currently working employees and retirees. The next few slides, I just gave you some examples of what that implicit rate subsidy or hidden subsidy is. So this is a good one to look at. Here just gives you, um, a little idea. So if we look at a sixty-year-old early retiree, they're running about one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars monthly in claims. But yet they have the option to stay on the plan and roughly pay average about eight hundred and thirty dollars a month for that single coverage. So they're really getting that implicit or hidden benefit of about five hundred dollars a month to be able to stay on your plans and pay though that group or blended rate rather than being age-adjusted and being charged more to really cover their claims for where they're at. Our claims tend to increase as we age under medical. So, um, an age sixty-year-old is just kind of an average, uh, retiree to show you though where that implicit or hidden benefit comes from. Then the next slide just gives you another little angle at it. So we're valuing that blue or early retiree box. We're not valuing any implicit subsidy for you post-sixty-five because we assume people are gonna enroll in Medicare and/or drop off your plan and go to a Medicare supplement type of plan. So we're really just valuing that blue box for you on that implicit or hidden subsidy for the access. And then of course, we're valuing too, how much of the premium are you paying directly and for how long to that employee? Of course, if they meet certain, um, eligibility requirements when they retire too. The next slide then just shows you kind of the process that we go through with Tina and her group here at the district. So, um, we gather all the data that we need for this study and it is formally done once every other year. So you can really think of the base valuation you can use for two disclosure cycles. Disclosure cycles are two financial statements. So every other year process. So we get the data, your asset information, and then of course, look through your contracts for your specific benefits. Then we do our number crunching in that black box and then come out with the results, of course, that end up in your financial statements. So now for the good stuff, here's the results, um, of this most recent study. So what shows up in your financial statement on your government-wide balance sheet is that actuarial accrued liability of the fourteen point eight million. And just to give you the split, the implicit part of that liability or that hidden subsidy benefit is about six point two. And the rest then is of course, that direct subsidized liability for the total of fourteen point eight million. The next couple of measures, um, just go into your, the OPEB expense calculation. That's an accrual expense calculation that's required. But you're probably most interested in that last line item, your actual estimated benefit payments. This twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year were about the one point two million. And again, that's made up of the two pieces. Some implicit and some direct payments. Now, the good news is you have an irrevocable OPEB trust backing up some of the liabilities. So as of July one, twenty twenty, you had about the one point seven million in that irrevocable OPEB trust. So that gets offset, um, against your liability so that just the net shows up in the government-wide balance sheet. And you also have the ability, because you've got some of those sunset clauses or higher date restrictions in place in the contract groups, you're allowed to also annually levy for some of these benefit payments if you choose to do so. And that's based on your funded or your unfunded percentage. So M D E, if you have an irrevocable OPEB trust, they don't want you to levy for the portion that's covered by your assets. So they'll only let you levy for the unfunded portion. So that's how the calculation, um, is done. And I think roughly we came up with this year that, um, you know, as an estimate, you'd probably be able to levy for about a million of those benefit payments if you choose to do so. And it's an annual decision. So if you make the decision to levy one year, that doesn't mean you have to do it the next year, you know, or vice versa. As long as that levy stays out there, I guess, that, that statute. So they don't promise that, you know, it will be there forever, but I haven't heard any rumblings lately that they're taking it away either. And Tina hasn't either. So that's always an option on the, uh, G A S B seventy-five or post-retirement medical side. That's the only option for that annual OPEB levy. And then your irrevocable OPEB trust only backs up those post-retirement medical benefits too. So you do have some other post-employment benefits that, um, fall under kind of different disclosures. So you have two reports. This is a smaller bucket of liability than the post-retirement medical benefits. But everything that is not an OPEB or post-retirement medical benefit then falls into this G A S B seventy-three category. And they're more pension-like benefits, but not T R A or para. So in your contracts, they tend to be an accrual of a certain number of days of service that are multiplied then by the daily rate of pay at retirement. And you subtract off, of course, those accumulated employer matching contributions that have been made during the, during the employee's career. So there's a net payout at retirement. And there's a closed group then of employees that have these in their contracts, this style of benefit. So only seventy-five active employees in our current valuation for these type of post-employment benefits. So both the G A S B seventy-five and the G A S B seventy-three then form your total, you know, post-employment benefit picture at your district. So the next slide shows you just the results then for G A S B seventy-three only. So you can see a smaller liability here at the six hundred and sixty thousand. And the estimated benefit payments this year from this kind of post-employment benefit is that sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty. So the last couple of points, um, that we, I just wanted to note is that how you choose to pay for the benefits is left up to you as a district. So you have to follow all the expensing and the expense numbers that I just showed you and the disclosure rules, of course. But how you do want to pay for the benefits as they come due is left up to you. So currently you've been, uh, you know, you've established that irrevocable OPEB trust. I think in the past, you've taken that annual levy opportunity. Your general fund can be used to pay for the benefits. So there's some different levers that you can use when you think about how you want to pay for these future benefits as they come due. And that funding policy then, that those decisions about how you want to pay for the benefits when they come due is now called the actuarially determined contribution. So it doesn't really involve the actuaries other than us taking kind of what your decisions are and how you want to pay for the benefits and coming up for, with some funding pattern for you, um, as you decide going forward. But it's best to have a written, you know, funding policy on that to review. And it's, it's something can be, that can be adjusted all the time or a plan. Um, and it's not something that's locked into place that can be adjusted by the board. But it is each school district's decision as to how they want to pay for those. You're not mandated to any one method or another. So then as part of that funding policy, again, here's where I just highlighted that annual OPEB levy along with you have your irrevocable OPEB trusts and of course, general fund monies. And here I put then at the bottom, uh, what your, you know, estimated you can probably levy this year. Once we get the final benefit payments all chewed up, then we'll know your exact number, but we're estimating. You can, about of a one point two, you can levy probably for about a million of it if you choose to, choose to do so. Or anywhere in between. It can be from zero to a million. So it can be nothing or up to a million about is your cap. And then I kind of put the rules that are in the statute above that that you need to meet in order to be able to annually levy at all. So hopefully that wasn't too painful. So, um, any questions at all on your post-employment benefits? Again, any details are in the reports and, um, yeah, so anyway, but you're good to go for a couple of years. And, um, yeah, so I hope to see you again in a, in a couple of years. And, uh, yeah, well, maybe, hopefully I maybe won't have to follow the fishing club next. So, but thank you very much.
And is Tina with the insurance report?
Yes. So, um, I might have to drive. It's kind of finicky. Uh, so every two years, um, we also have to do a health insurance bid. Um, it's called H I D A or the Health Insurance Transparency Act. Nope. Okay. Uh, all right, there we go. So we have to do an R F P, request for proposal every two years. We have to send it to three carriers and one of those has to be P E P, Public Employee Insurance Plan, I think is what it stands for. We have to publish it in our newspaper for twenty-one days before the bid opening. And we have to open the bids in the largest employee group. So this was our timeline this year. Um, we gathered some claims data from health partners. They, uh, got our plan descriptions for our agent, One Digital. And it was sent to, uh, three different carriers, actually more. Uh, on May twenty-seventh, we published the ad for bid in the newspaper. And on June eighteenth, the proposals were due. And on the twenty-first, they were opened in front of our insurance committee, which included representatives from our teacher group. And then we had best and final bids due July sixteenth. And again, we're opened and reviewed with our insurance committee at that time as well. Uh, so the last week, we kind of went over the proposals. We did a survey with our members to see, um, if we could gather any more data from them without going too detailed because it is private data until the decision is final. Then the information can be made public. And then we had our presentation today and our renewal date is October first. So on our insurance committee, these are some of the active participants this year. Um, Barbara and myself as administrative representatives, um, district office, we have Amy Stalback, Zach Harry, and Payroll. Secretary is Carrie Gindley. Um, we didn't have, um, any active paras or custodians or food service in our insurance committee, but we're trying to get them back into the process. Um, having a COVID year didn't really help that. So hopefully we'll get them back into the insurance committee meetings moving forward. But then our teacher representatives were Lisa Anderson, Liz Dirks, Eric Hansen, Justin Hosselton, Lisa Mayer, and Tanya Smiths. And so the administration that has to make the decision, uh, is Superintendent, myself, and the Director of Human Resources. And then one thing we also have to keep in mind that our insurance benefits have to be somewhat similar to the previous plan. We cannot have any decrease in aggregate value if we make a change, um, moving forward. So, um, it has to be similar benefits. And so in our proposals, there weren't any big changes in those, um, proposals. And so the bidders that were initially, um, giving us proposals was Health Partners, which is our current provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Medica, United Healthcare, Preferred One, and P E P, Public Employee Insurance Program. And so the best and final bid summary that we received for October first, we had, it was down to Health Partners and Blue Cross Blue Shield, each giving a zero percent change overall summary for the first year going into this October one and two-year caps of zero percent. You know, we might see some negatives if we have some good years where our claims aren't, you know, huge. Um, so this was an awesome year. We decided to go out three years just in case, you know, we do tend to see swings where if we don't really deserve a zero percent or those low percentages and people are competing for our business, if you will, that we see, you know, fifteen, twenty percent the following year. So we tried, um, got the unions, um, okay, of going out three years so at least we could have three years of stability to make sure that we don't see a big swing. So in the end, we selected Health Partners with, um, a zero and two caps of zero percent in the next three years. Um, we surveyed our members to see if they wa, if they would look at a previous provider or stay with the current one, if they were happy with our current, um, provider, because there were some bumps in the road with that transition to Health Partners. But I think a lot of that has been smoothed out. And if we went back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, it wasn't necessarily going to be the same Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, it wasn't through Resource Training Solutions Cooperative. It'd be separate. And that, we'd have to do the same thing where they'd have to kind of develop our plans from scratch based on what we have now. Um, so there would have been possibly some transition headaches that we all kind of got through two years ago. Um, back one more again. There is one change and it's not a change that we can control. It's with the IRS, with their H S A members. Um, we either had to raise the deductible or eliminate the fourth quarter carryover to maintain what the deductible is currently. So we decided to remove that fourth quarter carryos, carryover so we could keep the deductible the same and not raise that for families. Cause it is higher, I want to say, um, three thousand five hundred and sixty-five hundred for families. So we wanted to try to keep that as consistent as possible. And we're still looking to see if we could possibly change our plan year to January one. Right now we are October one. And so our open enrollment happens late August, early September. And that's a crazy time for people to make plan changes if they decide to change a plan. We have back-to-school happening and people are more focused on that. If we can move to a January one where people are making those decisions in November, it might give them more time to kind of digest everything. So we're still, um, looking to see if we can get that change in the next couple of years. And the last slide was just the formal written rationale of selecting Health Partners and why. So we have that for our auditors, um, when they come. Any questions on the process? It's just for your review, um, to give you an update on the process and what happened.
That's good.
Mm-hmm. It's very good news.
Great presentation, Tina.
Thanks.
I like the zero percent. Wasn't it a year nine percent previously?
Yes, um, I want to say it was, last round, it was an overall six percent and a nine percent cap in year two.
Are they giving you numbers like that because of the, just the history, the last year and a half, two years has been positive or?
Yep, we did have a good year last year. So that's kind of, you know, hard to weigh in. Um, you know, people weren't really getting elective surgeries. They couldn't get in for certain things. So hopefully we'll still see some positive claim results the next year or two.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Play is up one, the MSHSL membership resolution.
Good evening. All right, we're not gonna mess with that. Uh, the State High School League Membership Resolution. I'm here on behalf of Activities Director Gary Repning, who would normally be here presenting this. He is coincidentally at, uh, MSHSL conference right now. Um, so he must be assuming that we're gonna move forward with this. Uh, pretty straightforward. Obviously, our activities run through the Minnesota State High School League, and this is simply a resolution to continue that partnership.
Do you just need the top part read or the bottom part? Or the whole thing?
I do not have it in front of me. I'm not sure.
I think I can just read the bottom and we'll be good.
I think so.
Third, third, further resolved that this governing body hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league's sponsored activities. And that the administration responsibility for determining suit eligibility and for the supervision of such activity are signed to the official representatives identified by this governing board.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff to approve the MSHSL membership resolution. Second by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, five zero. Six zero. Five zero. She's done. Um, safe and healthy culture, so, um, first reading of policies is next, right?
I believe we have the board workshop recap in.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, uh, Tina's here for support. I will, I'll start this off here.
I tried to follow it and then I'm wrong.
No, yeah, that's That's great. Uh, so largely, we just wanted to present a little update on the uh, board workshop from July twenty-sixth, as well as a referendum update for the public's sake. Um, so what we have is a little look at what we've done, where we are, and what we have in front of us. Uh, we obviously have spent months, years, uh, you could argue, uh, researching, programming, and opportunity that the, the Monticello community values, um, and prioritizes as far as what we do in the district, what, what people want to see offered for their students, um, what people want to see offered in their community. Uh, recently, we've, we've spent time on market research on levy feasibility, trying to find out uh, what opportunities are out there in our community and what, what we can do, what we can be successful doing to create these opportunities for our kids. And obviously, the, the board has had a number of discussions regarding all this information uh, in trying to take the information into mix it together, mix what we need and, and what our community needs and what we can all support, um, together into a package to potentially move forward with a twenty twenty-one fall referendum. Um, where we are now is we are still in the process of gathering information. It's been a, it's been a lengthy one. We're, we're really trying to make sure that we hear from as many of our stakeholders and community members as we can. Uh, our families received a survey today. Uh, that, that gauges interest and support level for, for a number of programs and opportunities that we have in the district as well as for a general twenty twenty-one operating referendum and a potential twenty twenty-one technology levy. Um, so that, that will kind of be our final data point. That will help us pull back together, pull, help you guys pull back together as a board at subcommittee meetings next Tuesday, uh, to hopefully, um, come to a decision regarding, uh, levy resolution that would then come to the August sixteenth board meeting. Uh, I, I think on the middle up there, we just had the idea, as I mentioned, that we're, I, I know the board is currently evaluating a potential operating levy and a technology levy with the operating levy set to go toward the state funding gap that we have in education created by inflation, um, and the, the tech levy to bolster our technology capabilities in the classroom and around the district. Uh, so that's just a little overview, uh, I guess, of where we are at in the process. The the next step, as I said, is the one that we're in right now, which is gathering additional community feedback via that survey. And, and then we'll be taking a look at that data early next week to, to bring it to the board and and hopefully find a, a way to move forward with something that's in the best interests of our school community. Any questions?
And you're still up.
I am up again, I think. Essentially, just another update, nothing, uh, quite ready to move forward here as the, as the board knows, and hopefully as our community knows, we've been working on an updated safe learning plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We sent this out to families. Uh, we sent our original updated plan out to families a little over a month ago uh, to give them the opportunity to provide feedback. It has since gone through our curriculum advisory committee, uh, and they've provided a lot of helpful feedback. Looking at, we, we'd already changed quite a bit from where we were at last year to prepare for the year ahead, um, and, and they had a lot of good suggested changes. Um, and this week, the plan will be moving through our employee groups. Superintendent Olson is taking it to a number of our employee groups this week. And we will be meeting with cabinet, principals, and directors later this week to have uh, the same discussion to, to move through the safe learning plan piece by piece and make sure that we have everything covered. Um, obviously, you know, one of the things that's highlighted on there and one of the most important pieces is that the, the plan is going to be a living document. Uh, as we all know, we're, we're currently and constantly operating with the best data that we have available at the moment, and the, the plan will be updated throughout the school year to reflect that data and as, as requirements and as things change, uh, that will change with it. And we're currently working on putting into the plan information about specifically how that change will look and where people will be able to find the changes and, and really, that's one of the things we heard last year is that as things changed over the year, there wasn't like one source where people could go back and keep track of the changes. And so we're putting in a plan to, to make sure that's a lot, uh, more effective and easily followed this year. The, the plan includes a, a number of the same categories that, that you would have seen last year. It's, it's, it's scaled back. It's, it's a little more efficient, but it covers cleaning protocols, quarantine guidance, safety precautions, mitigation efforts, and more. Uh, and the hope is that by the time we get through all the employee groups and leadership groups this week, that we'll be able to have it out to families by as soon as the end of this week. Any questions regarding that?
Play, when you had said that it's been through the, the CAC or the Curriculum Advisory Committee, that's made up of parents, teachers, that's made, that has a lot of stakeholders in that group, so.
That's correct, yes.
Any other question?
Okay, thank you.
And then moving on to policies, Barb is handling policies tonight, Eric is.
Yep, good evening. So tonight I'm bringing, uh, forward the following policies for our first reading. Policy seven oh three, the annual audit. Policy, policy five thirty-four, the unpaid meals policy. Policy five twenty, uh, the student surveys policy. So the policy committee has had the opportunity to work through these policies and look at MSBA recommended changes. So all board members have also had an opportunity to review these policies in your board packet. So are there any questions at this time regarding any of these three policies? No questions? All right, great. Then, uh, we'll be moving these forward, uh, to a second reading at the next board meeting. And thank you to the policy committee for their work on these policies. Um, if you haven't had a chance to look at these policies in depth, please do so and reach out with any questions prior to the next board meeting. Thank you.
And I think that is our agenda for tonight, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
Saw moved.
Oops, second.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, second by Jeff Pigly, and we are adjourning at seven oh one. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm never gonna remember that part. Those, uh, those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passed.